This conference will now be recorded.
Are we good, Stephen?
Just I see Kent's on, I'm waiting. Kent, can you hear us? Can you unmute yourself?
He needs to push that camera button on, I think that's what's holding him.
Okay, I just hung up with Kent. He's was trying on his mobile phone. He's gonna go try on his iPad, but he said to go ahead and get started and he'll catch up as soon as he gets logged back in.
Okay, sounds good. So, can everyone hear me? Just a reminder, if you're not speaking, please mute your computer. And when you're ready to speak, you can unmute it. But welcome to the February 8th, 2021 work session. The mayor had some doctor's appointments this afternoon, so he asked me if I could fill in, which I'm glad to do. We all continue to pray for him and his family and their recovery. And for all that need that. And by the way, happy birthday, Ms. Nancy. Thanks to Pat for reminding us. And we'll go ahead and get started and move to number two council discussion and turn it over to Stephen.
All right, hang on one second, trying to get my PowerPoint. All right. So just to give an update on the face covering ordinance, and then I'll turn it over to council for any discussion they may want to have. Just put some numbers together. This is as of Friday. And then the numbers today, I was actually talking about it a little bit ago with Councilman Moore, are actually down a little bit more. I think our cases today were in the 40s. But a reminder that this lags about two days behind when they report data for today. They're actually reporting for Saturday on the data they report. But as you can see, we peaked out shortly about middle of January. That was following the Christmas and Thanksgiving kind of surge that we saw. Based on where we're trending towards now, you're kind of seeing we're about where we were before Thanksgiving. We're seeing our numbers drop back down to pre-Thanksgiving, which puts us kind of in line with our baseline that we saw from really late summer up until the holiday season that saw the big surge come in. So again, this is daily positive cases. You can see that over the past month there, we've kind of declined. Our peak was around the 1st of January, where we totaled over about 320 cases, about 310 cases in one day. And now, the last couple of weeks, we've been down in that 50 to about 100 range for daily cases. So what that's done for our cumulative cases, as you can see, how this is, we reviewed this the past few months. To get from our first thousand to our second thousand number of cases took 46 days. When we started seeing that peak climb right around Thanksgiving, that number dropped to about eight days to increase by 1,000 cases. It peaked out right after Christmas to about six days to go up 1,000 cases. And since the first of the year, you can see it's dropped to eight days and now it's down to about 14 days for this last thousand. And you can see that line beginning to kind of flatten a little bit as it's moving out. Again, 14-day running average. You can see we peaked out about 2,600 cases, about 2,600 cases. And we're down around a little over 1,000, around 1,100 cases or so right now for our 14-day running average. And again, if you draw a straight line across, you'll see that puts us back about where we were right about Thanksgiving, right before that big peak that went up. So you can see on deaths, we peaked out around the last, those six weeks where that peak was up, was around 17 to 20 deaths per week. It was down to 11 two weeks ago. In this past week, when I looked up the number today, I think it was at six or seven for the week that ended through six. So we're seeing that back again, back where it was before, right around Thanksgiving. The average daily positives, you can see that it's come down as well. The number of people that are testing that are coming back positive, the average did peak up around 20. And now it's down around 5% rolling average right now, which is a positive thing because that means that you can still see the black lines, the gray lines for the number of people going to get tested. But we're seeing fewer positive cases. So that means that there's less cases out in the community. The positive thing, that's one of the reasons that you're seeing the numbers decline and it taking a little longer to get more days to get 1,000 cases of positives. That's just kind of a summary of where we're at. I will say that the trend is looking positive right now. That's not to say that it will remain that way. I know there's, you know, things like the Super Bowl this past weekend. If there are parties or gatherings or people at a bar, you'll see those numbers in about two weeks. But what we hope is that this is a return to the baseline that we saw before the holiday spike that came in. Now I can try to answer any questions that y'all have.
Well, it's very encouraging, very encouraging. It's a short-term trend, but it's a trend. So I did not have a warm feeling about it. And after you display it visually like this, it's, I think we could go another month, another meeting.
If I might, I think that we got to pat ourselves on the back that this has been a good outcome. But I think some of it is having that ordinance in place, and I am not willing to recall it at this point. But I'm happy to see the downturn. My husband and I did get our shots, and we're hoping that we won't get the virus. And I'd like to see more and more emphasis put on inoculations and immunizations as we go along. But I still think we need to have it in place, the ordinance in place. Has it presented any problem to the police department? I know that, you know, I worried about that. So have we had any kickback from the police department as they're having to come out in any other capacity to help out merchants or retailers?
I believe Lane's on here and he can answer that, but I think the short answer would be no, but I'll let him go a little more in detail if needed.
We haven't had any complaints that I know of. If it was, it was not documented on a report. So if we've had anything, I have no documentation of it anywhere that we've had. So I've not heard about it either, they've not told me about it.
The, I will say complaints that, sorry, that we've had here have been people wanting it to be more strictly enforced, fines and so forth. I believe we had one citizen comment that will be on the, that council received as part of the meeting tonight where they're warning restaurants and bars shut down for a month. So I think anything that we've received has not necessarily been about the enforcement of the ordinance. It's been people who are wanting it to be stricter for the most part.
And I certainly, I certainly understand that. Yeah, I'm frustrated around town myself. A lot of times going into stores and still seeing people without masks and so on and so forth. I do think it's helped, as Pat said. But I'm comfortable where we are right now and going forward another month as is. If things change, you know, we may need to obviously look at it a little closer and a little more, a little more serious, for sure. Terry, you had your hand raised, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protiel. I have went to a lot of the stores here in Eastland, just stood for an hour and watched some of them, especially in the big box stores. There's not even, two-thirds of the people wear those masks. And the employees wear them hanging down below their nose, over their mouth. They don't even cover their nose. Had seen one employee pull a mask down from his nose, bow his head down and sneeze. Well, that defeats the whole purpose. I asked one of the employees at one of the big box stores, I said, "Do y'all not enforce this?" They said, "No, we don't enforce it because people could have a medical condition and they told us not to get involved in it." Another big store told me, said, "We don't enforce that, we're not in the city." Yes, they are in the city, but they don't enforce it. But they have masks at the door if you want them. But you see a man and his children and wife walk in with those children with a mask on and mother and daddy not have one on. I think there should be some kind of penalty. We went three months. And we make it sound common when we say, "Oh, there's just been 20 deaths a day." That's a lot of deaths. We know people personally now, not just people we see on TV, but we know people personally, they have died from this. And sickness in our own family, of the city, has been, this outrageous what it's been. Friends of ours has been in the hospital on ventilators for weeks and weeks. The hospital capacities, on the news today, the state was, we're still number one. Pickens County, City of Eastland, still number one. We need to do something. Other cities are making a penalty. We've had three months. It's not, it went down. But as Mr. Steve said, it's went down because Thanksgiving got over, Christmas got over. Now, as he and I talked earlier, Valentine's is coming. Super Bowl just passed. It's going to go up now. It's going to rise for the next two weeks. Then we're going to go another month before we can address it again. So I think there should be some kind of penalty now. But like I said, the rest of the cities just about in the state are doing some kind of penalty. And as I made a statement before, if you have a bee with no stinger, it's no good. So I think we should do some kind of penalty before this thing gets anywhere. 20 deaths a day is obnoxious, even though we're down to 20. That's still awful. Thank you.
Kent?
May I just, and I agree with you, Terry. I'm all in on that. Stephen, can we go ahead and between you and the chief and go ahead and do a preliminary ordinance of what our fines would be and our, you know, the, how would we enforce it, which is the most important thing, and how would we enforce it? And let's have that ready for our March meeting. And in the interim, if, you know, if we still have, continue to have a very good decline as we've had this past month, then we'll pass on it. But if it goes up, and Terry, you mentioned that, that, you know, we've had some social events that have happened this past month. If this starts going up, we need to be ready to move quickly in the month of March at the next meeting. That'd be my suggestion.
Yes, I can get with Chief Bowers and we can look at that. And there are some examples from other places around the state that we can look at on what they have set for their fees and how they enforce them. And we can work on that next couple of weeks to have something for council to review and preview of the next council meeting.
Jim? Unmute yourself. Still can't hear you.
Yeah, cannot hear you, Jim.
Is your microphone green in the top right corner? Sorry, Jim, and we can't hear you.
You might, can you try getting closer to the mic and see if it'll work?
Jim, you concur or are you against this?
Okay. Anyone else? Pat?
I have something.
Pat, go ahead.
No, I would concur with that and I'll cede the floor to Nancy.
I also agree with Kent and Terry also because I feel like, I know that numbers are going down, but we're still seeing people without masks. And if we see people without masks, then how many are not going to take the shot? Because we have some now that's on the police force who is declining the shots already, which is probably half of the force or less that does not even want to take the shots. So then we've got continuing holidays, we've got St. Patrick's Day's coming up. So that's another big deal. We know they're going to be out with their green beer and all this stuff and nobody's going to have masks on. So I think we need to put something in place, as Kent said, even if we use it or don't use it. We just need to have a backup plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. I'm sorry, I was, I was looking at you, but I saw Pat out of the corner of my eye and I called on her and not you. I apologize for that. Anyone else? Okay, Stephen, we can move on to the next item.
So the next one is the collection of grass clippings. I'm going to turn this over here to the Public Works Committee in just a second to let them talk about this, since this is a recommendation coming from them from discussion with staff. But I just wanted to put a couple of notes in there. The city has currently collects grass clippings curbside. And it's been discussed at the last two Public Works Committee meetings. I know, I think we discussed it at one of the work session meetings a couple of months ago, or maybe towards the end of last year. Just a couple of things, that grass clips are finer than leaves and they do create several issues for us. They do create additional wear and tear on equipment. The clumps, when they get wet, can damage blades and they can stick and create rusting. And technically, the leaf trucks that we have, vacuum trucks are not designed to collect that curb like it does. And then I'm going to let the Public Works Committee kind of take it from there and we can answer any questions. I believe that Public Works staff is on here to answer questions if there are any.
Very good. I'll speak for the committee. And on January the 27th, Pat Webb and Brian Garrison and I met with the Public Works people and Eddie Fortner and Justin and Eric. And we had a review in detail of this for an excellent meeting. And targeting the grass clipping, which has caused a lot of maintenance cost to our trucks, costing. And one time, we're looking at $4,000 to rebuild a vacuum system and then it's costing about $8,000 a year just to maintain the, to keep the trucks running. And by the nature of the grass clippings and sucking up that and the fertilizer, which is corrosive and rusting out the inner parts of the vacuum is causing a lot of problems. And as Stephen said, these, it's not really, our equipment's not really designed to do this. And surrounding cities, Eric took a good survey and Eddie took a good survey of our surrounding cities. And there's really not anybody except picking up, picking them up in plastic bags is an option, which is not a particularly good option, but you can do that. And the staff had suggested locating a place here in the city in our recycling center that we could dump off, where citizens can dump off the grass clippings and then take that to be recycled, which is, that's a good alternative. Probably one of the biggest opportunities that we've got is just educating the public on why this is important, why. A lot of times, one of the best things to do is just cut the grass and just let it recycle into itself, which is the best way to recycle grass. But if that's not attractive and that's not what you want, then you need to be prepared to, you know, gather this up and take it to the recycling center to have it recycle there. And also communicating to our commercial lawn care people that, you know, once they do this, that they're going to have to take that, those grass clippings with them. So that's what the Public Works Committee and the staff, that was the recommendation from our committee. Any additions, Pat or Brian, to this?
Yeah, I would only, no, that was a very good summarization. You know, to Stephen and Eddie and our Public Works, I would, you know, this one's tough too. People, you know, a lot of people aren't going to like losing that particular service. But it's just been such an issue over the years. And it, you know, it tends to knock our trucks out during the most inopportune times. And a lot of times, our most, you know, our busiest times in picking up leaf, I mean, yeah, leaves and brush. And of course, we're not going to make mention of that. We aren't going to discontinue that service at all. But I would, you know, if we go forward with this, I do want to, I do want to make sure we have a local area, like we discussed in our meeting, where those grass clippings can be taken, either at the Rice Recycle Center or somewhere else. Because I do think there will be people interested in that. And of course, the commercial companies will need to do that. So we do need to have something available. Stephen, do we have any update on that? Is that still a possibility since our meeting? Any updates?
I think Justin's on here and I may get him to get, I don't know if there's been any updates, but I think they're working on trying to make sure we can do that. Justin, are you on here and can you answer that? Or is Eddie?
Yeah. So currently, the plan is to allow residents to bring grass clippings here to the recycle center that we have in Seattle, where we will partner with Pickens County to compost at the landfill so that the community can come and pick up compost for free at no cost.
Thanks, Justin. Pat?
I think that it's going to be really important that we explain to the public why we're having to do this. And the cost of repairing our equipment over and over again has been just escalating. And these surrounding communities are not providing that as well. If we couple that with a good PR campaign to explain why and what the result of it is, and providing another place where residents can bring their clippings, I think we've got to do it in order to protect the cost of this service. And that's my recommendation.
Terry?
As Kent mentioned a while ago, and we've mentioned in this conversation, that they bring that to City Hall, then we go to the expense of hauling it to the landfill, and then they make that out for people to use. And then they bring it back and put it in their yard to use. Is there mulch, whatever? Isn't it the same thing if we take mulch and blades with our lawnmower and cut this up and let it fall in the grass and it makes its own fertilizer? Wouldn't that be less expensive if people were willing to do it? Thank you.
Yes, I think that's, as Kent mentioned, that's, I think optimally what you would like to see. But I think, I think you said also, it would not be coming back from the landfill once it arrived there. Was that part of your statement, once it was taken there? You're just, you're just making an example? If it did go there and come back, it would be the same? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. I just wondered what they were going to do with it after they'd done the process at the landfill? And you said, "Would let people pick it up and use it"? What would they use it for?
Just like you said, composting, fertilizing, those type of things.
So it's hauling around in a circle instead of chopping it up in your own yard? You're picking it up, taking it up, doing it, bring it back. So it's in a circle?
Right. Good point. Pat, did you raise your, did someone else have their hand raised?
I did not, but there are people that will not have room to compost their own grass clippings. So I can do that. And that's what I, a lot of times, that's what I do with my grass clippings. So I've got a compost pile in the backyard. But we would offer options to those folks who don't have a composting sort of, mulching lawnmower blade.
Anyone else? Jim, can we hear you? I thought you were going to write, I thought you were going to write a note and hold it up. hold it up. Eddie, uh, Justin, anything you guys would like to add? Stephen, while Jim's speaking, we'll give him just a few minutes, see if he can figure this out.
Those mulching blades while waiting, they're less than $35 or $40 a set for a lawnmower that was bill be cheaper than fixing our machine so much and you went to all that expense. They're not very expensive and they mulch it up, goes back down to grass, it dissolves, rots away and fertilize your grass.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on and, uh, hopefully Jim can get that, um, this issue rectified before the meeting. He can certainly, um, speak on that if he has something he'd like to say. So Stephen, you'd like to move on to the next item? He's probably talking to Stephen, so.
He, he is talking to me. I'm trying to get him squared away. Sorry.
Okay.
And then, you know, there's a bar turn off computer audio.
Jim, we hear you. We hear you. Jim, we hear you.
All right.
Yes, we hear you.
All right. So I'm going to hang up the telephone.
Yeah, don't touch anything. And you may speak.
All right.
Go ahead.
We have any numbers as to what it would cost to continue this service? A dollar amount to continue the service?
Eddie, uh, Justin, could you guys, um, I don't know if Stephen has that, that slide in his presentation, the one we, um, the one that was presented at the public works committee?
I, I don't, but Justin can probably speak on that.
Okay, thanks.
It's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, for labor, eighty to ninety thousand dollars annually. Um, you're probably looking at maintenance, maintenance wise for vehicles, um, anywhere between, uh, ten to fifteen thousand dollars, um, for both of the vehicles. Um, that's the majority of the cost, um, as far as operating on annual basis.
And the fuel, fuel cost would also be less.
Currently, um, with the situation that we have, if we're going to provide the service, we're going to need additional, um, resources to be able to provide that service the way it needs to be provided.
Well, we're providing the service now. The question is whether to stop providing the service. So we are currently providing it.
Yes, sir. And that, that's what they're, the numbers they gave you would be, um, that's what it's costing to provide that service now. Because if we were not picking up the grass, the trucks would not have to run three hundred or fifty-two weeks a year. Um, so it, there would be, the only additional cost to provide it would just be any additional wear and tear it puts on the, the, the leaf trucks above. But right now it is where we're supposed to get on average, um, say twelve months out of a impeller blade with the grass clippings, we're having to replace them twice as fast. Um, because they're finer, there's sand in them, there's dirt in them, it wears the blades down quicker. So really the additional cost is coming from the, um, the cost he gave is the damage that occurs to the vehicles from providing it as well as the costs, the, the, the time that it takes to provide that. Cause really from n- now until October of this year, the only thing we'll be picking up with those trucks will be grass. There might be a leaf here and there, but really from, say, March until October, that's all we're picking up with it is grass and it's doing that extra damage on the vehicle for that time period. And we wouldn't have to operate at those times if we weren't picking up the grass.
Okay. Possibly, possibly some brush or limb, limb issues after storms, but yeah.
Uh, I look at it as one discussion for the city to decide whether to start providing a service. And it's another discussion to, for the city to decide whether to stop providing a service that the city has been providing. Those are two different discussions in my opinion. Would this be done by way of an ordinance or a resolution?
No, sir. Uh, services like this are not, uh, started or removed by an ordinance or resolution. It's really more of a recommendation by staff to council, just the same way like when we stopped picking, uh, the curbside recycling up. Council didn't vote on that. If we needed, if there was anything associated cost wise, we may need to amend the budget or add funds to the budget, we would come back to council. Um, but, um, for, um, a matter like this, it does not really require a resolution or ordinance by council.
So we can say the administration made the decision.
Well, we, that's why we don't want to make that decision without council's guidance.
Yes, sir. Making the decision.
I think one thought, one thought Jim would be, and this, this came out of the meeting, and one thought would be, oh, well, first of all, we don't have to do anything until, you know, March, April, when the grass season comes in, March, April, May. And so we don't have to do anything until then. But, uh, but during the budget time, we're going to be discussing, and this is part of the public works, we'll be discussing picking up, uh, the garbage with the garbage cans. That's a, that's a major service that we're going to be considering if we can afford it in, in the budget process. And so, yeah, what would be a good timing would be to, uh, you know, at the same time we go public with picking up, uh, curbside trash cans, uh, you know, we would eliminate this service, sort of soften the blow if you know where I'm coming from.
All right, thank you.
Terry?
Brian, from the people you speak to out here in the public, if you compare the grass clippings to the amount of people that use it to get them picked up to the people had asked for those trash cans that Kent talked about, you probably got a hundred percent to twenty percent of people wanting the trash cans. So if we could afford one, the trash can pickup would be more meaningful to more citizens than the grass clippings, if we could only afford one. Thank you.
Yeah, and may I just address, Jim, the, um, you, you said, or you asked the question, who made the decision? And Kent tou- touched on that. There's not been a decision, but it's the public works committee's recommendation that we, we follow that recommendation. So this is for your consideration as well as Nancy's and, and Terry and the mayor. Does that help?
Yes, but we're not voting on that specific question.
I did it too. There is not, but you know, that question would be, Stephen, I have that question for you. Would that be addressed, uh, in, in our council meeting or could it be?
At some point. It, it, it could. I mean, but, um, and, and I reached out to Brian James to make sure a hundred percent on this, but, um, it, it really would be guidance from council if, you know, if the majority of council feels the direction they want to go, then you're kind of giving guidance to staff to implement. Um, if you want to do it by vote, then we can try to draft a resolution or something, for the met March council meeting to have council vote on if that would make council feel more comfortable.
Or would it ultimately show up in the budget, be reflected in the budget that we vote upon?
Yes, sir.
You know, if, if that, if the, what it was costing to maintain the service, if that cost is not included in the budget, then we're voting on it by voting on the budget.
Yes, sir. That would be a, an accurate statement.
This is Brian James. I, I looked at the ordinance statute. I don't see that it's required by ordinance. And I think what, uh, Councilman Robinson said is correct.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else? On this topic? Okay, Stephen?
So I did want to put on here, we did receive a request. Um, as you can see on the property that's highlighted in blue that borders the Westview Cemetery, this is, uh, just across from downtown from city hall. Um, this property, the city purchased it when we, um, and cleared it whenever we extended the doodle trail into downtown. It's about three acres in size. The tax value on it per the, um, the, um, county tax assessor is about a hundred, is a hundred and thirteen thousand. A lot of that has to do with how much we paid for the property. Um, and then there's still remnants of the old road where Happy Hollow Circle is, but for the most part, it's all grown over by, uh, now. Um, Pastor Timothy Sutton of Divine Purpose Outreach Ministry sent a letter to the mayor and myself, uh, that they were interested in the property. Um, I did talk to him on the phone and my understanding is that he would be interested in trying to do this as a cemetery. I don't, I, I think it would be run by his church. I, I don't, they, it didn't get a whole bunch of details on that part of, but I know the use that he has for it would be, um, as a cemetery. I said it does match, it backs up to our, to the current cemetery that we maintain over there in Westview. If council is interested in this, it would be something that required an ordinance to approve. Um, and council would have the ability to set a price, whatever they, whatever y'all desire, whether it be to charge or whether it be to give, it'd be up to y'all. Um, I will say that I have also been contacted by a couple other, at least one other party that is interested in potentially putting houses on it, but I have not received anything official from them yet. So I just wanted to, um, put that out there as well. But I know, I think, uh, Councilman Brazil has talked to Pastor Sutton, so she may have more details if she wants to add on to that, but we did want to have it on the agenda tonight so council's aware.
Um, I was approached from, um, by Pastor Sutton about the information that Stephen was talking about when the city had purchased the property. They are actually interested in the property to use, um, as a cemetery since that already backs up to the current cemetery that's there. Uh, his, his thinking is that they can use it for, or in the community of the Simpson area, surrounding area, for those who may not have, um, certain amount of monies to, um, have a plaid or whatever, to apply to have, to have a burial. So they would actually use this to kind of help out the community for someone that needs help with their burial expenses. So, and he also agreed to take care of the area if they actually obtain it. And, and it would be for the use of the church to be the one who would be responsible for maintaining and keeping up that particular area. So he approached me with it and so when I was bringing it back, I brought it back to Stephen. And so he and I and, uh, Councilman Webb has also, um, discussed it. And, and it's been sitting there for what Stephen, I guess probably about four, five years, even be, think of even before the doodle trail had come in there because they had torn all those houses down. So my suggestion was since it was to church and they're going to keep it up and be responsible for it, that we, um, this is my recommendation for tonight, to, um, give it to them in love and affection. Because like I say, it's been sitting there and I think Stephen had said someone had inquired about it before, but certain things they didn't, well, I guess they not want to, um, proceed to do. So it's just been sitting there. So my suggestion was since it was the church and, and it is in the Simpson community area, which we kind of wanted to say that way, and just give it to the church for a one dollar of love and affection.
Pat?
While I understand that the residents of a cemetery are quiet neighbors for development potential, um, backing up to the cemetery like that really does not lend itself well to any developers who might be interested in building houses there. And I think if the church were willing to, uh, maintain it, take care of it. Um, and as Ms. Brazil said, there are people who cannot afford to bury their loved ones and there are very few, uh, other, uh, graves sites that have not been already sold in the Westview Cemetery. So it, it seemed to me like it would be a good use for the property. Thank you.
Well, is the, uh, is the church, is it also going to sell the lots to people that can't afford it? Do we know yet?
Um, Kent, we didn't get into that discussion yet. Um, so I really don't know. I don't have a problem with asking to see how he wants to go about, um, talking with the family on how, if he wants to sell them or sell them for a lease amount or, um, whatever his goal is to do it. He was just, um, I think someone had approached him that just had a family member to pass away and they could not afford, um, a certain grave site at the amount that it was going to pay. So I don't know if his suggestion was to half of the amount of a normal grave site to help the families out, but that was his intention, the reason why he asked about this particular site. So, um, I guess once, um, because Stephen had mentioned that they had to go through DHEC and do all the necessary procedures to do that. So I'm sure once he, um, gets the information he needs, he could give us more, um, information. But I can also, in the meantime, I can ask that question and bring it back to you.
Good. Let's ask the question.
And I, and I think that would be, um, if this was something that council was wanting to consider, um, that it would be really getting, uh, Pastor Sutton to talk to council or, um, and explain exactly what he's wanting to do or what his ideas were and answer some of those questions. Just because if council decides to move forward, there are some, and, and, and I think Brian, yeah, Brian James is on here, he might can, uh, answer questions better if they come up, but some deed restrictions or some guidelines that we could potentially, uh, place upon the transfer of the property to ensure that it is used as a cemetery or, you know, if there are some guidelines that we want to put in there. I think that can be put as part of the transfer title.
Yeah, I just have to know what, uh, council's looking for and we could write it in as a restriction.
And that's if council does want to place those kind of restrictions, uh, I, I would say, you know, if council decides to give it, um, dollar or whatever the cost is, if you want to guarantee that it doesn't turn around, uh, and, and again, this is just being, you know, cynical, but that's a, that's part of, we have to look, is, uh, we could put a restriction in there that it has to be used as a cemetery or, or offered back to the city if it's not or whatever, just to keep the, the use in place.
I think that would be wise. Terry?
If we give this to the church, that's a nonprofit organization and it's going to be used for people that are in. that are injured, that don't have a way of getting there. I don't think there should be any charge for the use of that cemetery if you qualify it because they shouldn't receive a profit from it. But the church is a nonprofit and my church, which you most are familiar with, give the spots. You don't charge for them. It shouldn't be for profit if we're going to have it for God's house.
I hate to do this to the city attorney, but I'd like the legal opinion on the ownership of the Westview Cemetery.
Okay. Give me the, I, I don't know, but I'll, I'll have to research it and we'll find out.
Well, you, you, you need to get approval from somebody on how much time that's going to take you.
Yes, sir.
I looked at it once and gave up.
Okay. Well, that, that's probably a pretty good indication then.
And then I don't, despite my, my relatives, I really don't know much about cemetery law. But I think there are pretty strict state requirements for starting a new cemetery. As far as making sure there would be enough money, you know, funds available to maintain that cemetery once it started. That's, that's a question I really don't know the answer to, but I think there are requirements for that.
And, and I, and I would say when I spoke to Pastor Sutton, that was one of the things I recommend. While council was reviewing this and discussing it was for them to research what they would need to do in order to implement what he was wanting to do. Because I, again, I don't like, like Councilman Robin said, I don't know 100% of the details, but I do know that DHEC has certain requirements to be able to, to start a cemetery. I think the requirements to bury somebody is a little lighter, but to actually do a cemetery, there are some guidelines in place. And Pastor Sutton has said that he will, he is doing that research now.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think there's, I think there's more to it involved because if, it's just like Terry said, if the, the church is going to use it and then they're going to offer it for people that cannot afford a burial and that's, that's excellent and I appreciate that. But by the same token, the, the church is volunteered to maintain a cemetery. So, you know, where are they going to get their funds to maintain the cemetery to the quality of the adjoining cemetery? Which is, you know, we pay people to maintain the city's cemetery.
Okay, I don't see any more comments, so we'll, we'll wait for that information to come back to us. Stephen, would you like to move on to the next item?
Alright, so getting into the agenda items, the first one for discussion is the annexation of properties on Rock Springs Road. And Tommy's on here as well, so we can both answer any questions that you may have as we, as council may have moving forward. But just to give you a little background, it's two tax map numbers or two properties, tax map number 503806495574 and 1499. Together, those two properties in blue total about 2.45 acres. They have asked to be annexed in and zoned as GR2. This would provide a max of 14 units per acre. They, my understanding and Tommy's from the proposal for annexation is they are wanting to put a couple more apartment units back there. I think 24 units in total. And the planning commission did review this in January at their meeting. They approved unanimously. And there was no comment submitted or nobody who showed up to speak for or against the zoning. So if council does decide to move forward tonight, this would be our first reading and then second reading would be next month. And so if you have any questions, like I said, Tommy's on here, I'm on here, we can try to answer as much as you have.
Terry?
What is property located? I'm looking at on the map. I can't tell exactly where it's at. Is that located right beside the recreation building for Rock Springs Church?
It is below there. Let me turn on a pointer here. So this is the ball field at Rock Springs, their recreation buildings up here. This is Andrea Lane. It's actually the back entrance to Shadow Brook Apartments already. So it's south of there.
Who owned the land right below it, please, sir?
Hang on one second, I'll have to tell you in just a second.
I think it's a Stigall property.
Yeah, I think it's Stigall below and then Rock Springs owns.
It seems to make that corner useless back there on Stigall property, doesn't it?
Which corner?
Oh, right behind where you're talking about building apartments, right there in that corner?
The blue is where we're annexed. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, right at the other end away from the roadway, that corner, that corner.
They, they might already own that small piece there that you were talking about right there. There's probably Shadow Brooks right there.
Okay, thank you.
It was already, it was already in.
Okay.
Any other questions while we're waiting on Stephen? Stephen, are we waiting on you for information or Tommy answered that?
I think, I think Tommy answered it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, seeing no, no more hands raised, so we can move on.
Hang on a second, I'm trying to move on. It's not letting me.
Brian, if I might?
Sure.
Based on my experience with SC DOT, looking at the, the configuration of the, those two lots, they'll never give a tie-in to Rock Springs from those narrow lots. They will have to be accessed off of Andrea. So that's really the, the only way they can be used like that. They, they would not be able to establish a whole new road there.
Ms. Webb, they're not going to. Everything will come off of Andrea Lane.
Yes, Tommy. I, I, that was what I was trying to reinforce. That if we took it in and it was given some other zoning category, they wouldn't be able to establish their own road because of the access off of Brushy Creek. I meant Rock Springs, sorry.
I can, I can move forward now.
Go ahead.
So the next one is the Walnut Hill right of ways or rights of way. As you can see in the map here, the two areas that are highlighted in white, those are right of way easements or easements that we have for on Walnut Hill. To give you just a better idea of where we're at, the property to the east is the one that's on Pearson that's being cleared for like 116 homes right now. The property to the north, it says property under development is being cleared right now for development. The companion who owns the two properties that touch these easements are the ones that are requesting them from us. They're looking at doing some additional development for some more multifamily. Similar to what they have with the two buildings right there. And they've approached us about the right of way. The property that's under development, their plans show no access on that easement. So that would be the only concern that staff would have had, would have been if that property would have wanted to use that easement to connect into Walnut Hill. They're going to connect further west on Walnut Hill. And then where the other one on the south runs to is the back of the Pearson Terrace Apartments. So there's really nowhere for it to go beyond that point. So we could not see any reason why these right of ways would be used anytime in the near future. So it'd be up to council to make determination, require two readings. But Tommy is, again, is on here and we can answer any questions because for the most part, he's received the request. I know they are the ones that have been, they've been calling him about trying to see what the input from council is on moving forward with those right of ways.
Pat?
I just wanted to make sure there were no utilities located within those rights of way. That, that we didn't involve these combined or, or anybody else in, in what we're doing. Thank you.
There are currently not any utilities. All of the services provided through the main stretch of Walnut Hill or they attach into, I know the one on Pearson that's being developed, it's actually tying into Brookview, which is up Pearson Road. And I think the one under development on Walnut Hill is actually will tie into Pope Field Road up there. But we will verify that if council moves forward with first reading tonight, we will verify that 100% between first and second reading to make sure that if there are any easements, they're maintained.
Any other comments? I don't see any, Stephen.
Moving on, the next one's a warding of audit services. So as you know, we have our audit annually. We last advertised this five years ago. And it was ordered to Green Finney LLP. Their agreement expired after they completed the last audit that ran through July, June of 2020. So we advertised out on November 24th, closed on December 29th, received a total of four submittals. I reviewed them as well as, as Joni. And we didn't see any reason to award to anybody else outside of Green Finney LLP. They were, both of us recommended that. The way it's set up is it'd be for another five-year term for them to continue forward. We've been pleased with the services that they've provided. They're familiar with the city systems now and our software and as far as we're concerned, they're the, be the best to move forward with and that would be what would be on the agenda for council to award tonight at the council meeting.
Stephen, is any, my only question is, and I'm very comfortable with, with Green Finney, but my only question is, is are we locked in on five years? Is that the, is that wise to go out that far after we've already been within five years?
That's been our traditional term is of what we've gone for just because audits, they usually schedule their, when they're going to be here about six to nine months out. Just because there's only a certain time that you can, you know, when so many fiscal years end, June 30th, they have to get them done. Five years is pretty standard for audit terms. So I, I don't think it's out of the ordinary to, to do that. We aren't 100% locked in. If they, if council doesn't like the, their performance or if they decide they want to terminate early, there is guidelines in there for being able to do so.
Okay. I understand.
Any, anyone? Okay, thanks, Stephen.
Alright, I have some updates just to go through. Like we do every month, just some updates and operating, operations and maintenance. You can see that the offices are office areas moving forward. They're near completion. We've done the punch list down for them. The furniture will actually start being delivered this week for the office space. Locker rooms are moving forward. Lockers are in, lights are in. You can tell from the ceiling that there's still some painting to be done. Lot going on in the back areas. You can see the air rails hanging off. They were installing lights, finishing up the electrical and stuff like that. Our staff has already started putting in some pallet racks and stuff for storage. So that whenever they, we get closer to occupying the building, that we can go over there and start moving equipment. This is just a rear view fire station. You can see they've gotten in all the windows, well, except for, there's one at the bottom right they hadn't installed yet. And they've started inside, they'll start sheet rocking this week. And then they've started framing up around the old building to, so they can put metal on it to make it match the new building. So you'll see a lot more work start taking place beginning this week at the fire station. Again, they delivered sheet rock today and I was trying to think there were a couple of other things that they met out and said, you'll see more work progressing over there moving forward. I think they'll have some electricians out there finalizing some electrical stuff for rough in in the next week, in the next couple of weeks. And again, if you, any of y'all would like to go onsite and see the progress, all you gotta do is let us know and we'll take you out there. I will say the bill, the ops, the maintenance is now secured, so if you want to go, we have to go either while they're under construction or we'll have to get a key. So, but if you'd like to go out and see the progress, we're more than glad to take you out there and show you around and show you what's going on. Budget, as we review each month, local option sales tax, just to give you a kind of idea where we are through the first six months of, of this fiscal year. We're, right now, we're about 115,000 ahead of where we were this time last year. So we're still seeing our sales tax revenue exceeding budget. So that's a positive thing. You can see December was extremely high, so I think, see a lot of, a lot of Christmas shopping in there. Business license, we had, January was lower than we were last month, but we're still about 50,000 ahead of where we were the previous year. We'll start sending out renewals here next, probably four weeks or so, so you'll see a lot of renewals start coming in for, they'll be due by April 15th, so you'll see that number start climbing a good bit. These are the ones that have been the most impacted by COVID. You're seeing accommodations, we're still down a little bit for the year from July until through December for the first six months. We're down about $12,000. We're coming in, we're probably around 70%, I would say 65, 70% of where we were the previous year. So we're still seeing that number a little low. State accommodations on the bottom, you can see it's about 9,000, 9,500 below where it was the previous year. So that one's coming in, as you can see, it's about two-thirds as well. And then hospitality, even though we've had a couple of months that have been down, overall, it's still up about $7,800 over where it was last year. So it's starting to kind of steady right now and still, still staying above where it was the previous year. And I can answer any questions you may have on, on those items. Alright. All right. So did, did want to give you some updates on potential upcomings, annexations and zonings. I'm gonna let Tommy talk about these while he's on here and since he's been working on getting everything ready on those. So the first one up is corner of Crestview and Sheffield.
They have applied for a currently its own neighborhood commercial. They have applied for FRD. Their thought is to put townhomes there. We've got the property posted. And it will be coming up next Monday night. For the planning commission to hear, it'd be held down at the law enforcement center. So we, we've been keeping a record of phone calls for that area. We've got, we've got a dozen or so so far. And we'll, we'll see and monitor that and be prepared for the planning commission and at that point, it should come to y'all in March for that one. And Kent, that would be your ward, I'm assuming, right?
That's correct. And I'm very familiar with that, that big block of land. I've often thought to myself, that's some prime property for development, for either commercial or for housing, but the, the big, the important thing, we, we kicked this around this past year or two, but that intersection of, of Crestview and Sheffield is, is a very treacherous intersection with a four way stop right now. And we, this is the time that we need to involve the DOT in this for either stoplights or roundabout or something because in addition to this, there's some housing, there's some condominiums up around the Smithfield area that's going to be coming up to the, in the near future, if I'm not mistaken, Tommy. That's still going to be adding additional traffic to, to that intersection, which is high traffic and just a treacherous area at best.
Sure. That, that is, that is correct. They should be getting started in the near future. Talking with the developer, the potential developer on this one here. The entrance and exit would be on Crestview. And so I don't know if that'd help or hurt, but anyway, we'll, we'll listen to their proposal and see what the highway department can do for us.
Yeah. Well, I would invite anybody to drive that area, especially that Crestview. The, the Crestview road is, is not in very, very good condition, to be honest with you. I live off that road and it's, it's a marginal road and, and it's Sheffield's a little, at least Sheffield's a little bit better, but it's just a rough intersection.
That is correct. I like you drive it every day and it is in bad shape.
Pat.
This will be a posted meeting, so council can come. I want to hear what's being said is what I'm saying. Is that going to be appropriate?
That, that is correct. Yes ma'am. I'll double check with Lisa to be sure that she's done that, but it's, it is a posted meeting for the planning commission to meet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I will, I will come to that meeting also.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Terry.
Well, we received notification. Is that meeting and where?
Next Monday night at the law enforcement center.
Good deal. Thank you, Tommy.
This one, I've got another one that's, you'll be hearing about. So I've got one at 5:30 and one at 6:30. We're trying to keep the people apart. Stephen's got the next one up on the on the, now that ain't the one coming up, is it? The, the, go back, yeah. The, the one also coming up next Monday night, which is your ward, I believe, Terry. Is the backside of Bird Island Springs. It has raised a lot of interest there. It is currently zoned R 7.5 and they're proposing office institutional. It was a toss between that and medical, but they're wanting to put a nursing home there. And, but it has raised some concerns too. So we've decided to go ahead and hear both of them because we've kind of been putting, putting things off, putting things off with the planning commission. We're trying to get things back going so people can start moving forward. But one of them will be at 6:30 and one will be at 5:30. Don't hold me which is which right now, but I'd welcome y'all to attend both, at, at least Kent and Terry. And of course, any other ones, it's welcome to come.
Thanks for your comments.
And I think there's one more that's coming up. Stephen, can you flip that one?
Yeah, this is the intersection of McAllister and Couch Lane.
Yes, that, that one will be coming up. We, we met with the engineer and the owner's rep. I think there was some concerned boys from some of the neighborhood. We will be having a preliminary meeting with staff. One, the council members, one, the planning commission members, Joel Ledbetter with Combined Utility, Stephen, myself, Jerry O'Shields. And I think that's it. But we will meet with them probably towards the end of this month. They're wanting to get on the March agenda of the planning commission. We feel like it's going to be a very well attended meeting. But they, they, they're getting all their drawings together. They, they, Brian, they've done a lot of, lot of work. We've asked them to, to do a lot of work and, and they've done that. I think what they're going to present is going to be as good as it gets. I'll say that, you know, the development is going to go forward. And so we've got a choice to make of bringing, bringing it into city or not bringing it into city. They've done everything we've asked them to do. They've even done a, a stormwater study off their property downstream to, to assist us. They've done a study of site from the neighborhood from someone that called you with concern, Ryan, on what they'll see. Look it up. As I told you in the email the other day, I think the closest to the property line at any point is 50 foot. You know, they can get within about 20 foot if, if they so wish as, as a norm anyway. So they're anywhere from 50 to 75 foot away from the property lines. They're going to leave as many trees in there as they can leave. And then they will add fencing or add trees to that. So they've, they've gone well above and beyond what, what we've asked them to do. And so I think it's going to be a very good project, but we will get with this subcommittee first and then at that point, it is going to the planning commission on the third Monday in March. That would be at 5:30 at the law enforcement center. And, and Brian, I believe that is your ward. Is that not correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else, welcome to, anybody else, welcome to attend. Like I said, I know it's going to be a, a very hot item, but I think it's going to be a very nice project.
And, and I would just take this as an opportunity to say that if you did not watch the videos for the hometown legislative action day or week that they put on, one of the ones they talked about was enclaves within cities. And you'll notice all the gray is city limits and those kind of white beige properties are all in the county. So you'll notice that they're what they call enclaves of property that are located, that are 100% encircled by city property that, that are, that are in the county. So that's one of the topics that the municipal association's been pushing for a long time is to try to figure out a way to get those enclaves inside the city so that they can receive, make services easier because technically if somebody calls from that property, the sheriff's office has to respond to that call, which is, doesn't make sense considering that we're a whole lot closer and it's completely surrounded by the city in every direction. But I'd encourage you to watch those videos and if you haven't.
Looking at, looking at that, go back there, looking at those white, the, the enclaves that that are there adjacent to this, to this spot. Is there any opportunity for us to annex those? Those white spots that are adjacent to this blue spot there?
Mr. Dax, not, not at this time. One of them is a gentleman that, that lives there. He has no interest in coming into the city. And then the other part, I think, is they develop it or do whatever, they will bring it in sooner or later to, to, who receives the services. So not, not at this time.
All right.
It's my understanding that the city cannot require a particular category of zoning for annexation. Is that right?
I don't, I don't under, tell me that one more time.
The developer.
Cannot tell the owner, the city will annex your property if you zone it R 10.
Well, we, we, I'll say this, we've worked with this developer. He started out coming in as GR2, which is multifamily, which is right across the street to, to this property and even to, I think, the right side or you're facing from couch, the left side was GR2 and Cobblestone's GR2. And he would have had a pretty good argument, you know, of, of coming in with GR2. But we, we talked him into doing the FRD to try to appease a, a small group that had met with him and tried to appease some of the neighborhood. And he was all for it, which is no big deal. So I, I don't want to I, I will say that under the FRD, he has certain hoops he's got to jump through to present to the planning commission and council before we bring it in. Yes.
But with an annexation, if the property owner requests annexation with a zoning classification of FRD, city council can only say yes or no.
That is correct.
City council can say yes on the condition that you zone it R 10. We can't do that, can we?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, you, you'll be just acting upon the ordinance that's submitted and the ordinance is what they have requested. So, you know, they, they would have the right to come back. You know, and, and reapply based upon your recommendation. If they thought that was going to pass or they have the right not to do nothing because they fulfilled their obligation by our city ordinance by applying for annexation. And city council turned it down for whatever reason. So they've lived up to their obligation. And their next move would go to Combined Utility to solicit services from them in the county.
Yes, we've, we've been through this before.
Yes, sir. Many times.
Okay, good comments. Anyone else? On to the next.
So this one's Pine View. We met with them. Tommy, I think it was last week. This is already, this was already rezoned to FRD back about, it's been about 18 months ago.
That is correct.
And originally they were going to put in 93 attached single family townhomes. Since then, they have a new owner of the property and they have come back with a proposal of keeping it FRD, but actually changing it to about 70 single family detached homes. They did not quite, some of the lots aren't big enough to meet the R 6, the R 6 classification. So they are looking at the FRD. The original R 10 zoning that the property was would have allowed for 68 homes. So they're right about where it was originally. Their goal is to come up with a plan that they'll submit to the planning commission. I think they're hoping to get there in March or kind of like the last one. I think they're working through. And then if it gets to that in March, it would come to council in April and May. There was a lot of public input on this one when it came last time. So we anticipate when Tommy goes out there and puts signs up, whenever that happens, that there'll be a lot of, a lot of comments received on it again. Tommy, did I miss anything on that one?
No, sir. You hit right on the head, but I would like to say this right here is the perfect example of the FRD working at its best. We had an owner that submitted one thing and got it approved, but because they're changing so much stuff, it, it has to go back through the process again, which is different from your GR2, which somebody else could have bought and put totally different apartments or what have you. So the, the FRD, this is a, a good case of it working. They're changing the total outlook of what was submitted. And instead of townhomes, it's going to be single family homes. They come to us and they wanted the four or five, six of them, however many to front Pine View. We told them that the neighborhood, that was one thing that the neighborhood did not want, was any more traffic on Pine View. And, and they concurred with that and, and changed that out. And there was a couple of conditions. We're on the townhome, we was not going to accept the roads under the subdivision. We will accept, they will become city streets and we will service them with sanitation and everything else. So it's a, it was a, this is a perfect zone at its best, working like it's supposed to work.
That's, that's good observation, Tommy. I think, and we were all involved with this before, but and I know the adjoining neighbors were very vocal, if y'all remember, were very vocal about this, not wanting the, the townhomes. But now these are single family detached homes. So this is, you know, totally what's in the surrounding area. So I think would be, there'll be interest, but I think there'd be less less opposition to this because this would be less single family homes than the than the townhomes. And I think this will be a good development. My only comment was, and I've expressed this to Tommy, and if we can, if we could get a sidewalk adjacent, extending on down Brushy Creek Road, go ahead and extend the sidewalk down and let it coincide with Wimberly Lane. I think this would be a great opportunity for that sidewalk to occur if we can make that happen.
And Mr. Dax, I looked and I'm almost certain that on the other side of the road, the sidewalk does already go all the way to Brushy Creek. If I'm not mistaken.
Say it again now.
I believe the sidewalk on Wimberly does go all the way to Brushy Creek.
It, it does.
Opposite side of the road.
You're, you're correct, but it needs to, but Brushy, but it's, you know, it stops there at Brushy Creek Road. There's a, there's a big gap from Brushy Creek Road and the what's that twin Pine View Terrace, Pine, Pine View Road. But there's about an eighth of a, eighth of a mile where there's a big gap there and I'd like to pull that together and let those connect.
So on Brushy Creek Road itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it stops.
We did talk to them about interior sidewalks. I'm sorry, we did talk to them about interior sidewalks. We did not talk to them about the Brushy Creek roadside walk, but we could, we can circle back around with them on that.
I think, I think it's worth exploring. That would be a, that would be a great, that would connect a lot of the sidewalks in our community with better access to the red lines complex.
Okay, all right. We, we, we can circle back around with that.
Thank you.
Pat.
If I could, I, I'd like to thank Tommy a lot for working with them on this FRD. And as Tommy said, this is a perfect example of how an FRD works and can work well. If there's a major change, as this is a major change, it comes back in front of the community and the community gets a and the community gets a chance to take another look at it. It's not just a staff review. So I, I'm really pleased with the way the FRD is working. And having the FRD on the other one that is on Couch Lane will have the same fail-safe within it. So I think looking at an FRD for that one was the best choice of a zoning category. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Steven?
Just a few stormwater updates from Public Works. This is Wellington. This is kind of some construction. This one's been done for a few, about a couple of months now. But this is where they replaced both the crossings in Wellington's, Wellington, which is in Huntington South. This is the Carson Swell. You can see the before with the trees in the swell and then the after. This is another one where they've reshaped it. This is Sunningdale. You can see the before with the trees versus the ditch line that's in place now. And then this is Pine View where they're working down the center median of Pine View to create a swell down it. You can see in the left picture where the collection and growth has actually made it higher than the road and taken the ditch line away. So this is resetting that ditch line along the edge of the road to allow the water to flow where it needs to go. And that's it. I will say, we do have the stormwater, the thing, it's 18 stormwater projects out for bid. We have the pre-bid meeting tomorrow morning on that. Then it will close in a couple of weeks. So that will come back to council in March. Will be the recommendation to award all those stormwater projects. So they, we've got about $700,000 left from the bond that we put out for those stormwater projects. So we'll start moving forward with issuing those for award and getting them under construction.
Anyone else? Okay. Any other items desired to be discussed by council? Terry?
I want to go back to where we first started on this face covering ordinance thing. I just read some facts earlier that anytime you come in contact with anybody in the public, one out of three people that you come in contact or pass by has been exposed to the COVID virus and don't even have knowledge of it. So keep that in thought in this mask thing of why we should be wearing them. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thanks, everyone. That concludes our work session for tonight. We'll take about a 20-minute break, 15-minute break and be back for our regular council meeting shortly. Thank you. We're adjourned.